...Commissioner to order, this is our regular meeting for Tuesday, February the 20th of 2018. We will start our agenda tonight, as we usually do, with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. The invocation tonight will be led by Reverend Lavornia Franklin. Reverend Franklin, if you would please, sir, come over to the podium and then two of our GCAP students will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. God, we've come today because she woke us up this morning. We thank you for that. We pray now, God, that you would bless this meeting, bless our leadership of our seat there from our mayor and all our commissioners. We ask you to watch over them, keep them, give them guidance, give them spiritual guidance, God, that they would do right by the people and that be a blessing in your sight. We thank you now, God, for governing us and keeping us, that we have the best interests of the people of this great community. Would you bless our city, bless our state, bless our leadership? We thank you now, and all these many blessings we ask, in Jesus's name, amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. The invocation tonight, as I said, was given by Reverend Lavornia Franklin from Stewart Chapel, AME Church. And presently, Pastor Franklin is retired from the Macon-Bibb County Fire Department and was most recently assigned to senior pastor of Stewart Chapel, AME Church in Macon. He's blessed to share his life with his wife Sandra and their two daughters, Cassandra and Bailey. And I understand that Commissioner Lucas, this is your pastor? Well, he's got his hands full.
As does your pastor.
And our pledge of allegiance was led by two of our GCAP students tonight. GCAP stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students, and the GCAP program has high school students from every high school in Bibb County that have participated. There are about thirty usually in a GCAP class. And tonight, we have Fabian Faith, which you stand for. Faith is a junior at Mount Salz Academy. From time to time, ever since she was a young child, adults noted her unusual ability to communicate in ways beyond her years. Current affairs and politics have always been of great interest. Notably, Faith represented Macon-Bibb County this past summer in the Japan-America Grassroots Summit and traveled to Nara and Karobe, Japan. She's also local school organizer for the Georgia Secretary of State Student Ambassador's Program. And most recently, Faith, this past weekend, was selected as Cherry Blossom Queen for 2018. So Faith, thank you very much for being here. We're delighted that you're here. The other GCAP students that led us is Emmanuel Smart. Emmanuel, would you stand for? Emmanuel is a junior at Westside High School, where he is an active member of the DECA organization and head of the club's marketing division. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. Emmanuel believes, quote, "Learning about government is important because many youths do not fully understand the rights and privileges that are legally given to them," unquote. Through GCAPs, he hopes to expand his knowledge and understanding of the political process and also increase his awareness of what happens in the Bibb County justice system. So Emmanuel, thank you very much for being here. We congratulate both of you for being outstanding students and being here with us tonight. Next item of business is approval of the minutes. And our minutes of the meeting of February 6th, both the pre-commission meeting and the regular commission meeting have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections we need to make? If not, can I get a motion to approve by Commissioner Schlesinger and a second by Commissioner Shepherd? All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. And next, our invited guests, and we are delighted to have Myrtle Haversham, a contingent from the AARP. Ooh, there's David Pilgrim as well, hot diggity dog. What a dynamic duo. So let me recognize Myrtle and Dave. Y'all, we are delighted to have you here and we're excited about your presentation to us tonight.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Bibb County Commissioners and guests and local residents. I'm here joined by five of our dedicated, more than 200 volunteers of AARP in the Macon-Bibb area and my colleague, David Pilgrim, who will make a presentation to you. David is the Associate State Director for AARP Georgia and is specifically assigned to Macon-Bibb. But first, we'd like to just say for everybody, Macon-Bibb was the first community in the United States to be designated as an age-friendly community. That means that our elected officials, our residents and citizens and leaders agreed that they would work toward enhancing quality of life for people of all ages. And there were eight specific areas where we had to work. I'm proud to say through demonstrated actions in 2017, we were the first community in the U.S. again out of more than 200 communities that was approved for a five-year extension because of what's happening in Macon-Bibb. So first, let's give yourselves a round of applause. And with that said, David will read the presentation and ask our volunteers to join.
I ask that our volunteers actually join us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because without them, nothing would be possible for what we do within the AARP. Again, my name is David Pilgrim. I would like to say to each and everybody, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, none of this would be possible without you and the community behind it. It is something that is being recognized. Back in 2012, there was 12 cities that started this. Macon was the first, 12. Today, we stand at 203, including cities like New York, Seattle, Washington, Boston, Massachusetts, Austin, Texas. All these communities have now joined into this network that you have already done. So I want to say to the volunteers and to you, to the community, I want to say thank you for your leadership, thank you for your vision, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to do this. But in doing so, I and the volunteers of Macon, Georgia, and the over 1 million members in the state of Georgia would like to present this plaque to you and the council, the first plaque to be presented. As a member of AARP's network of age-friendly communities, in partnership with the World Health Organization Global Network of Age-Friendly Cities and Communities, Macon-Bibb, Georgia is hereby recognized for its leadership and achievement of the five-year process as age-friendly community, ensuring that Macon-Bibb, Georgia is a livable community for all ages and all people. Thank you for all that you do, and we appreciate the work in the community and the council has been able to do for us.
On behalf of the Macon-Bibb Commission, let me say thank you for all of your help and assistance in helping us to become the first age-friendly community and now the first in the nation to get the five-year renewal for it. We are committed to the eight domains of health from the World Health Organization and to making Macon-Bibb County a great place for people of all ages to live, work, and play. So thank you very much to the AARP. We appreciate this very much.
And Mr. Mayor, one other thing, we've presented and will allow these books to be put outside. If you notice, we had this publication that was put out, it says Where We Live. This is a second edition, and Macon has been presented in it in both times. And if you look at the magazine, you have on page 67, it highlights Tatno Square Park and the work that they're working toward, age-friendly, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, David. That's fantastic. I'm going to stay down here for another invited guest, and I would like to ask Justin Crum to come down and join me. Justin? Justin Crum has served our community for the last seven years, beginning as the webmaster in the former City of Macon's IT Department until now as the multimedia specialist and TV manager for the Office of Public Affairs. However, I'm sad but very proud to announce that tonight is his final meeting with us, and today was his last day of work. He's headed to Union City, Georgia, to be their marketing specialist and responsible for their rebranding and marketing efforts. His first order of business there, he's told, is to get the state-of-the-city address ready, begin to process and launch the new website, create new designs, and align their social media. So he'll be jumping in with both feet and doing a great job for them. I wanted to specifically recognize him here tonight because he's been with us at almost every meeting, from back in city council days and now committee meetings, commission meetings, for seven years, helping us make sure that people could see the work of their government. And during his time here, he has helped us to rebuild the former city website that was then part of the team that built the current website. So he's a webmaster. He's also a graphic designer and has been responsible for our Macon-Bibb County seal that you see on the wall behind us and the floor mats out in there. It was Justin that helped design the city seal and put it together, as well as creating a visual identity for our departments and programs that are coordinated with the same seal. He's also a professional photographer and helps with videography and online streaming of all our many events, including these commission meetings. He also works to help promote the Macon Water Authority meetings and get their meetings on their website or the website, and has helped lead the effort to improve our own broadcast from these chambers, from new equipment to new graphics to high-quality video. The monitors that you're looking at, Justin helped select and install. So Justin was always willing to drop whatever he was doing and help out a fellow employee or department, always willing to use his knowledge and expertise and make things better for all people. Justin, we are really going to miss you more so than we probably realize at this point. So when the quality of the programming goes down, you could say, dang, I wish Justin was still down there working with those folks because they need all the help that they can get. So we're all going to miss you, Justin, but we wish you well, and we're going to be pulling for you, and we know you're going to do a great job. And you tell Mayor Vince Williams when you get there that he owes me one. Next, we've got public comments on agenda items. That is, this is the time for people, members of the public, to speak to us about an item that's on the agenda for a vote tonight, so that you'll have an opportunity to speak to us before we vote. If you want to talk to us about a non-agenda item, we'll hear from you a little bit later in the program. The first is Wade Horton, who wants to talk to us about insurance. Mr. Horton, thank you very much for being here, sir, and you were recognized for five minutes. And if you could identify the item on the agenda that we've got that you want to address, that would be good too, because insurance is a pretty broad topic.
I don't have the item number, but I knew you was talking about it today. Oh, Item E. Thank you for having me today. As I stated last night, I would like for you guys to slow down and take your time a little bit and table this for tonight because you haven't given your employees, your precious commodity, opportunity to digest because there are so many questions that need to be answered. And I've spoken to some people and they still have questions. You broke it down to, you're talking about health, and then you say, well, we're going to postpone the benefits portion of it, pension portion of it. But those are issues that people have and need answers to before you make a decision so they can feel better about it. Because I know you want your employees to feel good about what's going on and some tough decisions you have to make. Mr. Mayor, you know, I can't, I don't see well at all. But I heard something last night, and I don't think you meant it the way you said it, but it was in reference to, wow, you know, you were surprised that all the people were here, and you don't know what they had been told. But when we listened to what was being said, what was told is exactly what was said and exactly what's the reason we were here. And that was to discuss concerns that we had about health insurance for retirees and employees and pension. I want you guys to take your time and send it back because, like I said, if you want everything to flow better, understand this, and not have disgruntled employees and retirees, you need to listen to them. We have elderly and aging retirees, they don't really understand that quickly what's going on. Y'all need to have some breakout sessions and let people come, ask questions, and talk to you one-on-one because, I'm sorry, two minutes is not enough time to tell people or people to ask you and discuss what they are feeling. And some people are so afraid to get up, they're not going to come and ask you questions. Because I've had people to come talk to me since about certain issues about this. Now, there's a lot of things that y'all could have done that you talked about last night to inform people on how they can make better decisions on their health care to lower the cost. But to all of a sudden make mandatory decisions and vote on it tonight, I think it's just moving too fast. I hear people down here a lot say, putting the cart before the horse. So I think it's a cart down here riding around with the horse in the back. We need to take time to make better decisions, because these are your employees who have dedicated their life service. You've got people who are police and firemen, first responders, and risked their lives to protect this city. We've got public works who at times are first responders because I know this last season when trees fell, my powers out for a week. I couldn't wait to hear a chainsaw. So these are first responders too. We have to be mindful of and take care of these people. Give us time to digest what you guys are doing because at the time when it is happening with budget shortfall and all that, it just sounds and looks very suspicious. So we need to do better with that. If y'all could just honor that and just slow it down, table it for tonight, let all of us feel better about the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Appreciate your comments, appreciate you being here. Next, Ms. Rufus Holmes. Ms. Holmes, I understand you want to talk to us about the insurance changes as well, sir.
I'm Rufus Holmes, and I'm chairman of the Bibb County Retired Employees Association. And I want to speak to y'all on Item E. The first thing, I do want to get the commissioners to realize, including the mayor, is we're taxpayers too. We're taxpayers and voters in this county. I know some of our retirees live out of county now, but a lot of them still pay Bibb County property taxes because they cannot sell their property in Bibb County. Let's talk about the elephant in the room. I understand there was 30 million in the OPEB fund. That's what Julie Moore said last night at the time of consolidation. One reason it ran out of money... Twenty-two? Okay. The reason OPEB fund went out of money wasn't only because of high insurance cost. It wasn't funded. The whole time Bibb County had an OPEB fund, it was funded. This was never funded, so it was going to run out of money sooner or later. And it was also used to pay for an early out. That decreased it a lot faster than it would have. And a lot of retirees think it was very irresponsible spending. The employees and retirees are the first ones y'all look to for money, anytime y'all give out of money. And we're getting a little tired of it. You're going to probably vote for these changes tonight, or y'all going to vote to table it. I've asked some of y'all to at least remove two of the items because they were the most objectionable to the retirees. That was the mail prescriptions and the dose optimization. But if y'all table this, I know this is going to come up at the next committee meeting. And I want to tell the people in the audience, they want to have a say-so about this, they need to come to the night meetings here at 6:00. That's the first and third Tuesdays of every month. The committee meetings in the morning, that's where a lot of things are decided. They need to come here at the second and fourth Tuesdays at 9:00 a.m. to hear what goes on in this government. I think they'd learn a lot. And I just think, I hope y'all will consider us a little bit more when y'all try to make changes. And I hope this will be part of your discussion if this is tabled. If it's not, I just hope enough of y'all will think about us and vote with our best interests.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I appreciate you being here, appreciate your comment, sir. Sylvia Haslam, Ms. Haslam, are you here? Yep, and wants to talk to us about insurance as well. Ms. Haslam, you'll recognize for five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak on this evening. I wanted to speak regarding insurance. I was here on last night, and it was so crowded until we didn't have a chance to speak on last night. I heard the presentation regarding the insurance and the pension. What I heard, I guess, was how the staff and the consultants had looked at the problem of the insurance and the pension that you have here for the city. And the majority of what was stated, when it all boiled down, was we need to do something about how we are using the insurance as employees. My concern was that everything appeared to have been put back on the employees in terms of the responsibility for the cost of the insurance. Someone mentioned earlier that every time there's a lack or need in the budget, it's the employees who are the ones that have to come out of pocket. And what I wanted to say tonight is that I see this as a family, and I see the employees as the children in the family. I see you all as the parents of the family. And I see whatever the children need, the parents are supposed to try to provide. When it comes to insurance, when you go out and you look for insurance to cover the children in your family, you need to try to get the best possible coverage that you can, not just accept what's offered to you by the companies. Someone mentioned last night that the medical center was holding out on a company because they have not been able to come to an agreement on what would be contained in the policy. Why can't the Health Committee for the city hold out on some companies until they agree with you on affordable rates? It's not the fault of the employees that the cost of insurance is going up. There needs to be an advocate to look at the price of insurance because everybody knows that health care is ridiculously high. And it's from the insurance companies, all the providers. So rather than putting it on the employees, go after the providers. Deal with the fact that health care is extremely high and it costs too much for the average person to pay for. The employees are not getting raises. Raises have not kept up with the cost of living. We used to have something a long time ago where people received a raise based on the gross national product. That's ancient, ancient history. It's like if you have so much money going on in your economy, this is what it takes for somebody to live on. They don't even look at that anymore. People just make what they make, and they're barely trying to get along on the salaries that they have. And when the insurance continues to go up and they have to pay a higher cost, it's taking away from the money that they would have to put in their house to pay their expenses. So they don't have extra money coming from anywhere. Just like the city has a budget, every employee has a household budget. And so employees can't manufacture money to go in their budget because there is a shortage because of the rising cost of the health care cost. So I'm just asking the committee, if you would look at other ways of trying to look at the health care industry rather than putting the burden on the backs of the employees to bring the cost of insurance down because it's every provider's prerogative to charge what they want to, and they're making a profit off of the employees while the employees are struggling to have the coverage that they need in order to be helped to maintain health. One other thing before I sit down, someone mentioned something last night. It was a fancy name for changing your medication dosage when the doctor prescribes it. I don't know what they called it, but it was like if he prescribes you to take X number of pills, you know, a day, you should lower that. You know, you should change it. Don't take them all. Well, that's a threat to your health. I don't know what you call that, but I would not suggest that anybody change whatever dosage their doctor has prescribed to them to try to save on that prescription bill because that's jeopardizing your health. And eventually, what it's going to lead to is that you're going to be paying more money for what happens to that person because they're not following the doctor's prescription, because they're going to become severely ill, because they're not taking their medications the way that they need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haslam. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Alex Grubbs. Ms. Grubbs also wants to talk to us about the health care proposal. Thank you, Ms. Grubbs. Appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past September, Bibb County employees signed up for our health care that we were going to be purchasing for the next year. With this proposal, we have found out that now the contract that we signed up for will be edited halfway into it, and a new plan could possibly be implemented as early as July 1st. I call that getting bamboozled. Mr. Henson from BBNT is the gentleman that this commission puts before us to explain this plan. If you go back and you listen to the recording, Mr. Henson starts out his presentation by telling us that an increase in co-pays is not a part of this plan. Then, a few steps later, he tells us that an increase in co-pay is in fact a part of the plan with the prescriptions, and then continues a few steps later to let us know that it is also to be implemented in reference to the doctors. At the same time, you have this gentleman standing before us who states that he feels like that even though we may not like things, the changes, that it will be better if it's explained to us so that we understand it, and maybe we can accept it then. This same gentleman who was telling us one thing out of one side of his mouth and something else out of the other, also then turns and tries to blame the reasons for making this proposal necessary on babies and cancer patients. Maybe it's time to change who's consulting us about insurance. I'm not going to take my whole five minutes. I'm just going to say this. Mr. Mayor, a few years ago, when y'all were trying to put together consolidation, bring the city and the county together, you had an informational meeting with county employees and city employees. In that meeting, you used an analogy. Everybody laughs at me when I try to imitate you when you said this, so I'm not going to do that impression here. However, you said consolidation was like launching a space shuttle. Thank God you don't work for NASA. Please vote no and avoid another disaster. The only reason I'm calling consolidation a disaster is because of the financial crutch that we find ourselves in necessitating this discussion. Please don't put this on the backs of your employees. You implemented a hiring freeze. You put this on the backs of your employees, you may need to lift it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Um, finally, uh, Sarah Hunt has Insurance Item E and also Item N that she wanted to talk to us about. Ms. Hunt? You will recognize for five minutes.
Thank you. I came to the meeting last night and there were hundreds outside that were not able to come on the inside. They were very upset because they say, you know how many employees you have and you know that this was not gonna accommodate them and they could not hear what was going on. The outside was filled, down the walkway was filled with concerned workers. I propose that you, as a representative of National Action Network, on behalf of the citizens, we're asking you to postpone this, have another meeting, town hall meeting for your employees. I am in an insurance company with my retirement system. We have three options that we can choose from. United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Aetna. The worst insurance company that I've ever dealt with with those three comp- three availables was Blue Cross Blue Shield. Right now, my godmother, who is a re- a forty-year retired person with the state of Georgia, they dropped her insurance without even notifying her. Blue Cross and Blue Shield is not an insurance company that this system should be involved in. Secondly, why aren't you looking at more than one company? You got Humana that has an excellent plan for retirees. The retirees and those that are working don't necessarily have to have the same companies. You need to look at companies that's gonna do best for your employees and your retirees. We're in, we've got our hand in the lion's mouth and you're gonna have to pull it out easy. Now, last night, I was sitting out there in the lobby, but I did hear something about forty thousand dollars. But today it's saying that that wasn't said. A lot of people out there heard the same thing that I heard. So I'm telling you, I'm asking you to table this. You got enough problems as it is. You got a couple of lawsuits coming against you already. You got disgruntled employees that's upset with what's going on because you have not been fair with them as their employers. You need to sit down and talk to them and explain to them this whole healthcare situation and go step by step and get, look at some more companies that can possibly give you a better deal for your employees than what you've got with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Don't just try to take the easy way out just by dumping it to somebody and letting them decide what's gonna be best for your people. You need to have somebody, a group, uh, two or three people to sit on a commission or something for insurance for your people and let them examine other companies so that you can choose the better company for, for all of them. Blue Cross and Blue Shield is the only thing you're looking at. You got other companies that you could consider that probably would give you a better deal than what you've got now. So let's, let's just table this and give it a second look 'cause we don't need a whole bunch of employees marching against this government. You got some serious problems. We're willing to work with you through these problems. But we're not just gonna sit back. The, the citizens, taxpayers are not just gonna sit back and let you do what you want to do, how you want to do it. Because I read the Georgia Constitution. I stayed up two nights reading it. I read the entire Georgia Constitution. And as citizens, we have some rights that we can stop you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate you being here. Uh, finally, Reverend Levonia Franklin, Reverend Franklin, did you want to address us on the roundabout? You will recognize for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Commission. Um, mine's is, uh, P. He's about the roundabout. Um, if you was in front of, uh, Stowe Chapel and behind the Navison Health, which is, we call it the Medical Center, um, there's a area on north, uh, on the backside of it and there's about five streets. And there's actually six, but one of them is kinda cut it off, but they, they park there and then you can come out. So any given time, you got six intersections coming to this area behind there. And coming down, um, Forsyth, getting into the area is dangerous. I had an auto accident there 'cause I didn't know who was doing what, coming from behind Subway and coming on the front side of Subway, come out of the street, the light turned green and stuff started happening. He froze, I froze, and there was an accident there, right there. And then that roundabout, the Navison Health came to us discussing how to make it safer by putting a roundabout there. And it would not only help with accidents, but it would help have a safer area and it would also help with the light there 'cause you wouldn't need a light there. So it would actually save the city money by putting a roundabout there. And it'll be safer there because if you coming that way, uh, from the offset street, there is no light there. So you really paying a rabbit coming from the, um, the left side of Forsyth, coming that way. If you park there, there's no light for you to come out of there. So it's dangerous. So I'm asking the, the commission, because of the safety of the, uh, people in the community coming through that area, is to let, if Navison is gonna lead the way to get us there safely, then I say we should look at, uh, giving them an opportunity to make that roundabout a safer area for those coming out of the hospital and those heading there too. 'Cause also you got ambulances flying through that very same area and then going down there. And any given time, you could sit there on a Friday night or Saturday night between helicopters coming and the ambulance coming down that area, it is congested area. And you can sit there. You'll sit longer. You can see what I'm saying, that it needs to be something done there. If not Navison, somebody, because it is an area that needs to be some help. So thank you for listening to me and I pray that tonight we have something that will help resolve that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Franklin. Appreciate you being here again. Thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda are reports from our standing committees. And, uh, the first is Operations and Finance and that report will be given to us by Chairman Beckel. Chairman Beckel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first, uh, Operations Finance met on February thirteenth, twenty eighteen, took the following action. The committee elected myself as chairman and Commissioner Virgil Watkins as vice chair of Operations and Finance. The committee approved the following agreements, an agreement with Goldrey Associates, Inc. in the amount of ninety-eight hundred dollars for the purpose of performing Lake Tobasovki Dam breaching modeling services related to the Finley-Rather Bank, uh, dam at Lake Tobasovki. Also approved a purchase and sale agreement with Georgia Kenworth, Inc. for the purchase of a knuckle boom loader and trash body for the solid waste and public works department in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars. Committee approved establishing qualifying fees for elected county offices for upcoming twenty-eighteen county elections. Committee approved supporting HR one fifty-nine for Georgia General Assembly, allowing Georgia General Assembly to dedicate fee collections for statutorily designated programs. Committee approved adopting the BBNT recommendations to the medical and pharmacy plans. Committee accepted the following grants as well. From the state of Georgia Emergency Management Homeland Security Agency for forty thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars to acquire and sustain an explosive ordinance disposal program and three thousand dollars to be used to acquire and/or sustain an explosive ordinance disposal K nine program in the Bibb County Sheriff's Office. Also approved a grant from the Georgia Governor's, Governor's Office of Highway Safety for twenty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars in the Bibb County Sheriff's Office to combat impaired and aggressive drivers. That's the heat cars you see, um, in, on the streets. Also approved a downtown challenge grant for fourteen thousand from the Community Foundation Central Georgia, Inc. to be used for Lower Poplar, Poplar Park project. Committee approved the, the following supplemental budget request. Appropriates eleven hundred dollars from general fund balance to internal auditor budget to pay for office relocation cost. We also approved appropriating a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars from general fund balance to the HR budget to pay for office relocation cost. Committee also approved the following for the twenty-eighteen splash projects. We approved the Tenth Amendment to the twenty-eighteen splash project and timeline and budget as presented by the splash project manager. Also approved the appropriation three hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars from twenty-seventeen splash bond proceeds to provide funding for the estimated cost of relocating utilities along, uh, Jeffersonville Road. Also approved the appropriation a hundred thousand dollars from twenty-seventeen splash bond proceeds to provide funding for engineering costs associated with construction of sidewalks on Pine Hill Drive. Also appropriated two hundred six thousand dollars from the twenty-seventeen splash bond proceeds to provide for funding for engineering costs associated with improvements to Middle Georgia State University roads and sidewalks. We also appropriated two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the twenty-seventeen splash bond proceeds to provide funding for engineering costs associated with the proposed roundabout at Navison Hospital that the Reverend Franklin just discussed. And that concludes the report of Operations and Finance.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Beckel. Uh, next, our Economic and Community Development, uh, report will be given by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. The, um, Economic and Community Development Committee met on February thirteenth, twenty eighteen and took the following action. The committee elected, uh, Commissioner Elaine Lucas as chairman and Commissioner Larry Schlesinger as vice chairman of the committee. The committee heard an update from Newtown, Macon. The committee appointed, uh, recommended the appointment of Dr. James Bompas and the reappointment of Gene Dunwood, Sr. to the Macon Economic Development Commission. The committee approved recognizing March as Women's History Month. Uh, this concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, next, our Public Safety Committee and that report will be given to us by Chairman Shepherd. Chairman Shepherd?
Public Safety Committee met February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, took the following action. The committee elected Commissioner Scotty Shepherd as chairman and Commissioner Joe Allen as vice chairman of the Public Safety Committee. That concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Shepherd. Uh, finally, the Facilities and Engineering Committee Report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
The Facilities and Engineering Committee met on February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. The committee selected myself, Commissioner Virgil Watkins, as chairman and Commissioner Scotty Shepherd as vice chairman of the Facilities and Engineering Committee. The committee heard an update from the Army Corps of Engineers on the levee. The committee approved the closure of a portion of Elizabeth Street from Nesbom Avenue to Tyndale Avenue for the purposes of the Tyndale Heights redevelopment program. This commit, this completes the report of Facilities and Engineering Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, ne- next item on our agenda is the, the, uh, consent agenda. Um, these are alcoholic beverage license applications. Uh, there are two, uh, applications and both of them are accompanied by all of the requisite paperwork being the Business Development Service, uh, indication that the appropriate fees have been paid. The sher- the sheriff's, uh, certificate of an appropriate background check of the applicant, a certificate from planning and zoning to say that the zoning compliance ordinances, uh, have been met. Uh, a measurement form from the county engineer to say that the location meets all the appropriate distance requirements uh, from other prohibited structures. Uh, and finally, the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph, uh, in connection with this application. Uh, the first of these applications is from ZJ's, a package store, doing business as Star Liquor at thirty seventy-six Riverside Drive. Uh, and it is for packaged liquor, beer, and wine, uh, to go from that location. Uh, the second, uh, application, uh, is from Stephen Mark Coley, um, which is doing business as Scolli's LLC, uh, doing business as the Texas Border Grill at fifty-nine, I'm sorry, fifty-seven, ninety-seven Houston Road. And that is for beer, draft beer, and wine to be consumed on the premises, uh, at that location. The committee of the whole, uh, re- recommends approval and issuance of both licenses. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those two licenses signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and those two licenses will be issued as requested. Uh, next item, we'll go into old, old business now. Um, and the first item, uh, is about some flood modeling, uh, work to be done in connection with Lake Tobasovki and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Goldro Associates Incorporated in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the purpose of performing Lake Tobasovki Dam breach modeling services related to the Finley-Rather Dam and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? The ayes have it, uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is a resolution to, um, buy a knuckle boom loader, uh, with a trash body. Uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that, uh, by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize and approve the mayor to execute a purchase and sell agreement with Georgia Kenworth Incorporated for the purchase of a knuckle boom loader and trash body for the solid waste department in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars to be paid from the solid waste budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Watkins?
Yes, sir. Um, this item was not budgeted originally. It is non-essential. We are in a budget crunch. It is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a knuckle boom loader, which will make our fourth. Um, again, it's non-essential. I understand that it's coming from the solid waste budget, but solid waste traditionally operates at a deficit. Their fund balance is not robust at all. They're gonna require, or they typically require a transfer of funds from us just about every year. Um, currently, they're not collecting any collections. We're really banking on a really robust April collection when everybody pays annually. After then, maybe if that works out, but we don't know if that's gonna work out yet. There are members in the audience who are signing petitions. We may have a problem as far as revenue projections go for solid waste. And again, this is non-essential. I would encourage us to table this item. Motion to table.
Um, a mo- a motion and second to, to table is, is not, non-debatable, uh, under the rules of procedure. So all of those in favor, uh, of tabling this item signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? I didn't, I did. I, I, I'm not good enough to make that as, if, if, those, those in favor of tabling the item, please show me your hand. Raise your hand. Those in favor of tabling the item. One, two, three, four, five, six, six. Those, those opposed to tabling the item, two. Um, so sixty-two, the item is tabled. Uh, and, uh, I, I think pursuant to agreement, it would be referred back to, uh, Operations and Finance Committee. Um, if that's appropriate to refer it back to the committee. So that item was tabled. Uh, next is a, a resolution, amending resolution, uh, R eighteen double oh three, establishing qualifying fees for public office in the elections for this year. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission, amending resolution R eighteen zero 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 three, establishing and fixing the qualifying fees for each elected county office to be filled in the upcoming two thousand and eighteen Macon-Bibb County election and for other purposes.
Um, the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? He- hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose, no? The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is Item D, uh, which is support, uh, for a bill pending in the Georgia General Assembly, HR one fifty-eight. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission in support of HR one fifty-eight of the General Assembly of Georgia, sponsored by Representative Jay Powell of Camilla, a measure allowing the Georgia General Assembly to dedicate fee collections for their statutory, statutorily designed program and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Uh, is there a further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. Um, a lot of people did not, were not privileged to be in our committee, uh, meeting when we discussed this. Could I ask the, um, our interim county attorney if she would just give us a quick, uh, overview of what this is about? Could I ask the, our interim county attorney if she would just give us a quick overview of what this is about?
This is in support of legislation that's currently pending. That would dedicate fees for the purpose for which they were specially designated for in the first place. Basically, it would eliminate the collection of these fees for these purposes and then certain amounts of those fees are dedicated for their specific purpose. But the other fees are used for other programs that were not considered when the fees were collected in the first place. Long story short.
Okay.
Commissioner Lucas, does that answer your inquiry?
But someone said they didn't hear what she said.
Basically.
There you go.
Maybe that's what's wrong. Okay. Basically, what happens is that the, there's a bill pending with the legislators That would designate that these fees which are collected for specific purposes are actually then funneled back into those purposes versus They collect the fees, they use a certain amount of those fees for those certain purposes and then they take the additional fees that they've collected and use them for other things that weren't considered in the first place. So it's basically making sure that these fees are actually designated and used for those specific purposes.
Oh, if for instance, there's a fee collected and it's designated for traumatic brain injuries. It would, this bill would mandate that that money go to that specific purpose. And that there would not be an opportunity for anybody to go in and move some money from that intended purpose.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Another example would be the money they collect for the teen driving. They collect roughly three to ten million dollars annually, but only eight million is actually used to fund the teen driver program. This would make it so that that entire amount is used for teen driving.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye? Oppose no? The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a committee amendment for the medical and pharmacy plan and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Maconville County Commission To Approve And Adopt BBNT's Recommendations To The Maconville County Medical And Pharmacy Plans And For Other Lawful Purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee Recommends Approval As Amended And That Originally, There Were Ten Recommendations And The Committee Struck One, Number Ten. So as amended, that was a recommendation. Further discussion? Commissioner Bechtel, I've got you first, sir.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a further amendment to this document for consideration by the full commission. I would like to offer an amendment to remove item number two, which is the implement the home delivery complete, which is a, I believe, a mandatory mail order. And then I would like to remove item number five, which is implement dose optimization. Those two are the items that I believe received a lot of discussion last evening. And that would leave seven items to be considered, but I would like to make that, put that, make that in the form of motion that we amend the item.
Commissioner Bechtel moves to delete item two and five from the list of changes in the program. Is there a second? Well, since it's a deletion of what's written, yeah, it's a deletion of what's written. I'm talking about the need for written amendment, but since it's a deletion, we just. I suppose, I suppose we could get something in writing to say delete, delete number two and number five. Want me to do that? I mean, or you want to, or you want to just suspend, suspend the rule requiring. Yeah, well, all in favor of suspending the rule requiring written amendments to be written in the case of two deletions signify by saying aye? Oppose no? Motion carries. So the motion by Commissioner Bechtel then is to delete two. In fact, was there a second to the motion? By Commissioner Jones. Is there further discussion now on Commissioner Bechtel's motion to delete item number two and item number five? Is there further discussion on that? And I'm not going to be able to tell because I've got, I already had a cue. So hold up your hand if you've got further discussion on that item, on the, Commissioner Tillman?
Yes sir, Mr. Mayor. Tried, talked to several commissioners and just trying to work this detail out To see can we go ahead and move forward with the people's business. We have at least over the past month, more than fifty items. And you know, it's always interesting what somebody says. You know, we table some information because you try to be respectful to commissioners. But we did have a public hearing overwhelmingly and also early enrollment. In that meeting last year, there were commissioners who expressed that we as the entire commission participate and attend Open enrollment to help the employees understand this process. And I think out of the, all of us, ten of us, Commissioner Schlesinger and myself attended those meetings and those open enrollments. And so if it's somebody else, I may have overlooked you, but I, in asking that was there. To me, there was so much set up as far as, so many providers that I could see sometimes why people are confused. It's about twenty tables set up with so many different options. I do think we need to narrow that down. We do need our HR to probably take charge of that and take more control. I think probably every ninety days, we probably need to get with our employees to update them on a lot of this healthcare. But I do want to say the OPAL, which I heard was not used for early retirement. That was a pension plan incentive only. I do agree about the mail prescription and the dose option. Probably over the last year, Commissioner Watkins and, you know, not just, just look at us, but we're, we are probably the two youngest serving commissioners here on this commission. But yet, last year, we probably spent more days in the hospital than anybody up here. I know my bill was at least forty-one thousand dollars. And so I do understand about the healthcare issue. This thing is national. It comes all the way down from the national. We had Obamacare and the current president and the Congress just keeps trying to come up with a way. And they have yet to come up with a way to solve it. So it is a problem with everybody trying to resolve this issue. I will be honest and say the days of Maconville County having good insurance is probably over. It's probably over. You know, people, and there are probably some good companies still out there available. But unfortunate, this commission probably makes the least of everybody and we have to still buy into our own insurance. And so we have to do, we have to be mindful of our employers, but I am most mindful of those that have retired. There's not much the retirees can do. They can't buy into anything. Their income doesn't change, and so, doesn't change. And so I am really in support of removing those items that do directly affect our retirees. And so any other commissioners that, you know, I'm hoping that we can agree upon this to move forward. Because this is what I was trying to do before we came out here. So thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Tillman. Commissioner Lucas, I think, I think I've got you next. This is a conversation or discussion about the amendment.
I agree with those two changes and I'm going to vote for those.
Changes.
To, to remove those. But I'm also going to vote to table this entire thing. We are not finished with this. And we can sit here and piecemeal it all we want to, but it's still a basic, there is still a basic problem with these proposals. And sometimes we jump at a little bit of something to get it off of our plate. We cannot do that. We were sent here to make these kinds of decisions and we don't need to just jump at the chance of getting rid of this. That's an old ploy to give you a little bit of something and then you forget about all of the other mess that's left. We still have, that's what, items two and what? And five. Now, is everybody clear about what all the others do? All the others have detrimental effects on many employees too. So you think I'm going to sit up here and vote to eliminate two of them? And then we still are left saddling employees with all the rest of this stuff? Now, this is a good first step to take those two things out. And I'm glad there's some people who are willing to move to take those out as they should be out. But the rest of it, there's some more stuff that needs to come out of here too. So last night, I, I don't know, I was here last night. I don't know where anybody else was. But our folks spoke loud and clear that there is a lot of junk in these proposals. And it's not the commissioners that brought this up. The mayor requested this of that company. And they brought, they're making money telling us how to negatively impact our employees. That's what they're doing. And so, I'm not going to sit up here, I'm going to vote for Commissioner Bechtel's amendment. I'm going to vote for that because it takes two devils out of the mix. But we still got a whole lot of other stuff. So I'm going to move, if the mayor will recognize my light when I turn it on. I'm going to move to table the remainder because we need to go back to committee And talk about all these other items and the negative impact that they have on our employees, many of whom are retirees and on fixed income. So now, I'm, I'm, I don't know who else needs to speak, but I'm ready to vote in favor of this. But I do hope that everybody, we will go ahead and vote to send this back. What we need to do is, we need to walk a mile in our employee shoes. We need to look at ourselves and take their individual situations and look at them. And see if we would then vote to approve the rest of this stuff. I don't think we would. I don't think we would.
Thank, thank. Thank, thank, thank you Commissioner, thank you Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Watkins, is this on the amendment, sir?
Yes sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Even if we voted for all ten of these recommendations that were originally recommended, They would have absolutely zero impact on FY eighteen budget and our shortfall of three point seven million dollars. All right, none of this, you keep saying July first is when our budget, well, June thirty-first is when our budget year ends. These aren't taking effect until the thirty-first of July. All right, the original proposal was how do we balance the FY eighteen budget? This list has no impact on that. It would, I guess the million dollars annually that was proposed over all of these items would not start until next year. So it, the rest of it is a little concerning to me. And I just want to take a little time and go back to something Ms. Haslam was mentioning. Our healthcare, our healthcare consultant was doing, well, his, a large part of the argument Was that the cost increase was driven by the claims and the misuseage of our employees. I just had to run, I got my computer open. I had to run some numbers on that. So we only did four percent more claims than we did the previously, four percent more. And that's correlating to a twenty percent increase in the cost that we paid. Five million dollars with a four percent uptick on usage. And again, we're blaming our employees and trying to shift the burden on them when I, I think Ms. Haslam is dead right. We are fighting against a industry that is about profit. And us shifting that burden to our employees is a bit unfair and it doesn't guarantee any cost controls. Because there's nothing preventing Blue Cross Blue Shield from raising this up to thirty million dollars because we had a two percent increase next year. And it just doesn't correlate to me. In the first budget year, I mean, July of this year, we tried to come up with some concrete actions to change habits. Our proposed and passed was a monthly lunch and learn series that gets to what Mr. Tillman is talking about. Monthly engagements with our employees about healthcare passed. That's what we're supposed to be doing. We passed it in July. We hadn't had our first lunch and learn series. We were also supposed to purchase Fitbits for the purposes of getting people walking more and being more active Because we know that weight loss and doing ten thousand steps a day has an impact on our plan. Less claim, more healthy people equals a cheaper plan. We still haven't given out the Fitbits yet and we're getting close to rollout, I guess, but we haven't purchased. We still got problems and there's no real initiative on those positive impacts. But we're here, and those could have impacts on this budget year if they don't, if everybody gets a little healthier. And those a little bit more. I think the information about urgent care versus emergency room could be handled in an email Or a lunchroom series or just telling people versus doubling co-pays and everything else on the list. I would like to ask the sponsor of this amendment for a friendly amendment. Items one, three, four, and six also deal with pharmacies' costs. Would you accept those items being deleted as a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay. At this time, I would like to offer that as an amendment to delete items one, three, four, and six. I can go over details of what they are?
We have a, have a motion in a second to amend the amendment. The amendment originally was to delete items two and five pursuant to this motion you're deleting. And give me the list again. You said.
Item one deals with the essential drug list where they would, based on my understanding, that was switching us to more.
Just give me the numbers first.
One, one is the central drug list. Three is adjusting the pharmacy co-payments And creating a ninety-day instead of a thirty-day prescription co-payment system. Item four creates a fourth tier for the specialty drugs, which are the drugs for cancer patients, AIDS patients, and people who are sick. To make that a maximum of what, three hundred? Item six deals with a choice tiered network which would limit me to choice. I think that would mean we could only go to CVS, Target, or possibly Walmart as a pharmacy for level one and level two drugs. So those are those four items.
Those four. All right, so Commissioner Watkins has moved to amend the amendment to also include items one, three, four, and six. There was a second by Commissioner Lucas to that. Is there further discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Commissioner Bechtel, I think I've got your light on again, sir.
Yes, I'd just like to clarify some things that were stated earlier. Blue Cross and Blue Shield offers us their discounts and they are the administrator to TPO, third-party administrator. Their charges are one point eight a year. That's the fixed cost for the services they provide and we benefit from their discounts and their network. The remainder of the dollars, roughly twenty-three million dollars, are actual claims that are incurred by those in the plan. The claims were up four percent, but they were all high-dollar claims. I just want to make Commissioner Watkins aware that we do not have an insurance product. We are self-insured. We pay the claims. Blue Cross and Blue Shield administers the claims and pays them and overlays their discounts and their network.
Sir, I'm extremely aware of how we work and even to the point.
That's not what you said, so I wish to clarify that.
All right, and I would like to. Hold it, hold it, hold it. I had Commissioner Tillman, then I'll come back to you. If you'd like, press your, press your key again, please, sir. Commissioner Tillman?
I think we can probably debate this issue all night. We probably need to debate it in the committee meeting. I move to table.
You're, you're, you're tabling, I think, the motion to amend the amendment. I think that's what you're technically moving to table. Your motion, your motion to table is to table the further discussion on the amendment to the amendment. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? We are, we are in discussion on the amendment to the amendment. His motion to table is on the amendment to, that's the item under discussion. The item under discussion is the amendment to the amendment. So, so that's, that's what he's moved, moved to table, the further discussion on the amendment to the amendment.
The attorney can figure it out.
That's the item under discussion.
No? You table the amendment.
Withdraw the amendment.
I, I think that, he, he's motioned to table the amendment to the amendment. That, that's, that's where we are in the process.
I think I'm trying to, I was trying to help us all out, but I'll be glad to withdraw it if somebody else wants to come back and, you know, because I don't think we're gonna solve it right here. We, you know, I'm just trying to move on with the business and take it back to committee 'cause I think that's where it's headed.
So, what I think you would have to have is, is a vote, is a vote on the motion and second that's on the table.
I withdraw the motion to table amendments.
That, that's what I think you'd have to have, you'd have to have a vote on the, right. Great. Alright, so, so you withdraw, Commissioner Tillman, is that correct? Okay. Commissioner Watkins, is there further discussion, sir? Can I come back to you on this?
Yes, sir. And I, and I know we're in the weeds, but I really like numbers. So, so I got a breakdown here of claims broken down by category. First category being claims between $0 and nine, and $1,000. Between 2016 and 2017, 41 less people used claims for nine, or less than $900. And that reflects a nine, but we paid $900 more, 701 versus 702,000 for that same category. Like, it's not just high-dollar claims where they beat us up on, they beat us up in every fee category.
The employees beat us up because it's their claims. If you're saying somebody gets beat, if you're, if it's beat up-
We're not gonna have back and forth. We're not, we're not, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not, we're not gonna have back and forth, one at a time, and Commissioner Watkins has the floor. Commissioner Watkins?
And I, and I just reiterate that the employees that had issues, we had 41 fewer issues, but paid more for it in that category. And that's consistent across the board.
That, bring your light if, if, if we got, any further point, Commissioner Watkins?
I'll just reiterate, talking about the whole thing, there was a 4% increase in claims and a 20% increase in the cost. That's the full, and it's consistent throughout claims categories. They overcharged us at a consistent rate and that's what we're not doing anything about.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Watkins. Is there further discussion on the amendment to the amendment? I see no further lights. What I need is, is a, a hand vote, please, on those that are in favor of the amendment to the amendment, which would add items one, three, four, and six to the list of items to be deleted. So, those in favor of the amendment to the amendment would vote. I, those opposed to the amendment to the amendment would vote no. Let me see the hands of the I's, those that are in favor of the amendment to the amendment. One, two, three, four. Let me see the hands of the ones that are opposed to the amendment to the amendment. One, two, three. Somebody didn't vote. Four, four. They, 'cause there eight of them, eight of them. So, so you got, you gotta vote. Right, so four, four, four to four. Apparently Commissioner Allen is not here. The chair votes, let me see which way I need to vote. What I, what I just say, that if you're in favor of voting, you, you would say yes. So, I vote no, I vote no. So, the amendment to the amendment is defeated. That brings us back to the main motion of the, of the resolution as amended. Is there further discussion on the main motion, which was the resolution as amended? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote on that. Commissioner Lucas, have you, have you got a?
We're voting on the initial-
As amended.
Amendment to remove two and five, that's all we're voting on.
That is correct, that's what, that, that's what, that is correct. So, so, so the amendment, the amendment-
How did I vote? I got, I got you. I don't blame you. You, Commissioner Schlesinger, Commissioner Lucas, and Commissioner Bibens voted yes. The remainder of the commissioners voted no.
You voted in favor of what you were trying to do.
Right.
So, now we're back to the amendment. So, this, this is the amendment that Commissioner Bechtel offered to delete items two and five, that everybody, I think, is gonna vote in favor of, 'cause I think that was almost a given, but let's, let's go through the process. Is there further discussion on that? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of the original amendment by Commissioner Bechtel to delete items two and five, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, so the resolution is amended to delete items two and five. Is there now further discussion on the resolution as amended, i.e. to delete items two and five? Is there further discussion?
Yes. My, my light is on.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it was on. You need to push it again. Was on.
You just turned yourself off.
I'm, I'm turning you on.
It's lit up over here.
If you leave it alone, I'm, I'm trying to turn, I'm trying to help you.
I'd like to move to table.
Got a, got a motion now to table the resolution as amended and it was seconded by Commissioner Schlesinger. Is there further discussion on the, well, excuse me, a motion to table is non-debatable. So, you got a motion by Commissioner Lucas, second by Commissioner Schlesinger to table the resolution. All in favor then of the motion to table, let me get a hand vote again. If you're in favor of moving to table, you would vote yes. So, let me see the hands of those that want to vote yes to table this. One, two, three, four, five. You got five votes to table, let me see the hands to oppose it. One, one, two. These are, these are against, these are, these are, these are against the, to table. I'm just trying to get an accurate count. You had five, four, you're against, and you're against, that's three, five to three. And, and so I can't vote, that's what I'm trying to get to. Hey now, hey now. Outbursting the audience. Okay, so five, five to four, excuse me, I'm sorry, five to three, the, the motion is tabled. And that'll go back then to the committee from which it came, which is Committee of the Whole, I believe. Was that the one at the Committee of the Whole? No, it was Operations and Finance. It was in Operations and Finance. So, it'll, it'll be referred back to Operations and Finance for, for, for the discussion. Okay, that takes us to item F. And item F is a grant from the state of Georgia for the Sheriff's Department in Homeland Security, so I will ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the state of Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency in the amount of $40,970 to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office to acquire and or sustain an explosive ordinance disposal program and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Believe it or not, I think the aye had it. Item F, we, we just accepted a grant for $40,970 for the Bibb County Sheriff's Explosive Ordinance. And that takes you to item G. Item G is a, a resolution to, to accept a grant for $3,000 for the K-9 program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the state of Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency in the amount of $3,000 to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office to acquire and or sustain an explosive ordinance disposal K-9 program and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item H is a heat grant, highway enforcement of aggressive traffic, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a heat grant from the Georgia Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the amount of $25,096.39 to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office to combat impaired and aggressive drivers and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item I. It's a resolution to accept a downtown challenge grant in the amount of $14,000, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the design plan and authorizing the mayor to accept a downtown challenge grant in the amount of $14,000 from the Community Foundation of Central Georgia Incorporated to be used for the Lower Poplar Park project and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item J is an appropriations ordinance to appropriate $1,100 for moving the internal auditor's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Commission of Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, to appropriate $1,100 from general fund balance to internal auditor budget to pay for office relocation costs, attached here to a supplement number three and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item K, which is an ordinance to appropriate $131,000 from fund balance to relocate the Human Resources Department, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Commission of Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, to appropriate $131,000 from general fund balance to the Human Resources Budget to pay for office relocation costs attached here to a supplement number four and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, again, this is non-budget coming out of fund balance. And we, we got the report from Facilities Management, which they're moving from the Willie Hill Annex to below us in the old Investigations Detective Bureau. And we're asking for $130,000 to an existing building that was occupied, and $90,000 of that is paint and flooring. I'm, I'm certain we could do without it. I would actually, so my, I would like to amend this to $40,000 to complete the project.
You, you've got a, a motion and second now, back to our original rules, 'cause I don't wanna misstate, you're, you're moving to strike $131,000 and substitute 40?
Yes, sir.
And that, that was, that was the motion by Watkins and, and second by Lucas. Let me take the privilege of, of the, of the chair to ask you consideration. We have for three years been working on this project. We are coming really down to the time where we must be out of that building and have, have it vacated, we must have it vacated and out in order to have the closing on time. This is critical to relocating the last of the departments, and, and I regret that you find it excessive. I am, I am confident, however, that in the grand scheme of things, you would want your Human Resources Department located in appropriate facilities for vistas and employees and everybody else is number one. Number two, going back, we must relocate them and get them out of the, the Annex building no, no later than the end of March, and we're running out of time to do that. Your, your, your motion is, is, is well-intended and, and well-received, but I would, I would urge us not to change the amount. Don't change horses in the middle of the stream. Let's finish what we're doing and get this building sold because unless the renovations are done, the cost of the elevators and repair to the HVAC alone would be more than, and heaven only knows what it would do to us as far as not closing on the contract and what that would do to us. So, I, I would urge the Commission's consideration to vote against this amendment. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
So, so you're saying that you would rather have no money-
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Than the $131-
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, I'm trying to defeat the amendment.
So, you would not rather have the $40,000-
No, ma'am.
And then come back and justify the remaining money.
No, ma'am.
You want $131,000 or nothing?
Ma'am? Did I vote it for nothing? Is that what you said? I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying not to-
You would, you would rather have zero than to have, you prefer having the $131,000 with no option for us to get information as to whether this is in fact necessary? So, you would rather have zero than to start with $40,000? And then let's see how much this paint and carpet and flooring will cost? 'Cause from what I've heard, um-
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the majority of the Commission will, will favor me, will, will defeat the amendment, which would take it back then to the resolution as was originally proposed, which is 131. I need your consideration on that. So, I need you to vote no on the amendment. And then back to the original motion, please vote yes.
What would you do if you got 40?
I, I think it would create a untold, it would create an untold amount of problems and difficulties in order to order carpet, having it in in time to get the furniture moved in order to get everybody out and over. Just don't derail this project this late in the process o, o, over this is what I'm asking you to do.
You're making up stuff as you go.
No, ma'am, I'm-
I think you're making up stuff.
Ms. Hunt, please, ma'am, no outbursts from the audience. I'm trying to do the best I can up here. So, is there further discussion, is there, is there further discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Watkins, back to you, is that something I missed?
Yes, sir. I understand that you have a project that you're working on. My priority at this point as an unbudgetment to the county is the FY18 budget. We are $3.7 million in the hole. You presented a hiring freeze as your solution to that problem, and I see that as being a bit, you're gonna still have us $3.7 million in the hole. And in today's presentation, you presented us with a quarter million dollars worth of increases to the 3.7. At some point, we have to start saying no. I, I thank the Commission for considering the item previously with the tractor, but again, there is, there has to be a path forward that's not $131,000 on you completing your goal, and I would like for you to work towards achieving that. There is no possible way out of those 11 floors that your per-floor move rate was 100-plus thousand. So, however you did it for the first seven or eight moves, I would implore you to figure that out within a budget. Right above it, we're moving Internal Affairs for $1,100, which is reasonable. I, I don't know how it's happening, I don't know why it's happening, but my concern is the FY17 shortfall.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Watkins. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, which changes the amount from $131,000 to $40,000, please signify by, would, would vote yes. So, please let me see the hands of those that want to vote yes in favor of the amendment. One, you in favor of your amendment? You, you voting in favor of the amendment? Three? Three, okay. And tho, those opposed to the amendment would vote no. One, two, three, four, five, five. So, five to three, we're back to the original motion of, of $131,000. All, is there further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the ordinance?
Building that we're clearing out, how much money have we received? First of all, have we signed a final contract for the sale of that building?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
How much money have we received into Macon-Bibb's- How much money have we received into Macon Bibb coffers from the sale of that building?
I'm not able to answer that right now. I don't know the answer.
It's zero, I think.
No, ma'am.
And how much have we spent in relocation fees?
I can't answer that question for you either right now. I'll be glad to get the information for you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance at one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars as originally proposed, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to item L, which is a Tenth Amendment to the SPOLOST Timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the Tenth Amendment to the two thousand and eighteen SPOLOST Project Timeline and Budget as presented by the SPOLOST Project Manager and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got one no, Commissioner Bibbins, but the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item M, which is an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds, SPOLOST bond proceeds as just allocated with the timeline. This is for the Jeffersonville Road Project. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, two hundred, three hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOST Bond Proceeds to provide funding for the estimated cost of relocating utilities along Jeffersonville Road and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Jeffersonville Road, making progress on Jeffersonville Road. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate some money for the sidewalks along Pine Hill Drive, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOST Bond Proceeds to provide funding for engineering costs associated with the construction of sidewalks on Pine Hill Drive and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is item O, which is an ordinance approving some additional funds for road improvements at Middle Georgia State University using SPOLOST bond funds. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two hundred and six thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOST Bond Proceeds to provide funding for engineering costs associated with improvements to Middle Georgia State University's road and sidewalks and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got one no, Commissioner Bibbins. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is item P, which is an ordinance to provide some funding for engineering for the roundabout at Navisant Hospital, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOST Bond Proceeds to provide funding for engineering costs associated with the proposed roundabout at Navisant Hospital and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, I got your light on, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm glad everybody's getting more and more conscious and concerned about what we're spending. So I commend Commissioner Watkins, even though I didn't agree with him on that one particular item, but I commend him for, we need to scrutinize each and every thing we spend on anything. And SPOLOST dollars are not from the general fund, but they're also tax dollars. They come from the, we the people, taxpayers of Macon, Georgia. We've got many, many assets in this community like GEICO, YKK, the world's largest zipper company. We've got Middle Georgia State College and University. We've got Mercer University. We've got Wesleyan College. We've got Central Georgia Technical College. We've got businesses large and small. We've got two great hospitals, HCA Coliseum and Navisant Health, two great hospitals. We're fortunate to have all of those. We're fortunate to have each and every little mom-and-pop store. Bless them. I will not be able to support this for many reasons. It's easy to say it's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. First of all, it wasn't approved by the voters. Yeah, we can slide it under roads and bridges, but you know, it really wasn't approved by the voters. And then some people say, well, it was in the Macon Action Plan. Well, I think it was put in there directly or indirectly by Navisant Health, but nonetheless, it's not a necessary expense. And I know, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, you negotiated with Navisant Health and said, came back and we were going to pay eighty percent, and they were going to pay twenty percent, and they were going to maintain it. But I don't think that was a good result from your negotiations, with all due respect. And Commissioner Bibbins is right. Sometimes the connected folks get all the fruits. Sometimes that dollars are committed to things that a special interest group asked for. My conscience will not let me support it. Navisant Health's one of our great assets here in our community, and as a nonprofit, a nonprofit hospital, they had a net profit in two thousand and sixteen of eight hundred million dollars. Eight hundred million dollars. Now, let me say, Navisant has wonderful doctors, wonderful nurses, great personnel. There's some wonderful, caring people who work there. They do a great job. So, in addition to, they have four hundred days cash on hand. I wish this government had four hundred days cash on hand. We don't. They also have sixty-nine, the public needs to know, they have sixty-nine properties as a nonprofit valued, according to the Tax Assessor's Office, two hundred and seventy million dollars. And they pay taxes of zero on those sixty-nine properties. That's zero. They should be paying three million eight hundred thousand dollars, which would go to this community, including the BOE. They don't. So furthermore, just going to lay it all out on the table, the CEO makes an annual compensation of a million four hundred thousand dollars. That's a fact. It's a fact. Ask Stanley Dunlap. He'll tell you, he did an open records request. The COO makes a million three hundred thousand dollars. So it raises the question, we've got this great hospital, this great asset, but how much is enough? How much should we do to supplement their budget and what they have here? Look at HCA Coliseum. They're not a nonprofit hospital. Of course, I don't know how you're a nonprofit hospital when you have a net profit of eight hundred million dollars. How does that happen? HCA Coliseum paid almost nine hundred thousand dollars. They have sixteen properties. And then you may have read in The Telegraph recently, of course, we've considered, you know, going way back decades ago, the Macon Hospital was a fledgling hospital. The Bibb County Commission gave them millions and millions of dollars for indigent care. And they do spend a lot of money on indigent care. According to Navisant Health, almost fifteen million dollars. We gave them four hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars. And that's just a drop in the bucket, but you know what we could do with four hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars? We can hire nine employees. And built into the current budget that we're on right now, we were supposed to add nine, or excuse me, seven people to Public Works. They're very understaffed. We were supposed to add four people to Facilities Management, grossly understaffed, and four more people to Parks and Beautification. And we can't spend SPOLOST dollars on those positions, but I'm just making an example. So, in The Telegraph, February the ninth, there was an article, perhaps you saw it, Navisant Health combining with Charlotte-based hospital system, now called Atrium. And here's what large companies and corporations do. When they say they are combining or merging, guess who's the owner? Guess who calls the shots after it's done? The larger of the two. And that's Carolina-based health systems now known as Atrium, which is much, much larger than Navisant Health. Now, there's a law professor out of Duke University. His name is Barack Rickman, a Duke Law School professor. He's researched all these nonprofit hospital mergers. And I quote, "There's very little evidence that these consolidations create efficiencies or help consumers. There is growing evidence that they increase prices. And in my view, it is taking the healthcare delivery system in the wrong direction." This is tied into our healthcare costs, which we pay too much for, and that's going back out to bid. But all that to say, this wealthy, wealthy, profitable company called Navisant Health, who does a great job in our community, I cannot, this roundabout will cost well over a million dollars. And we, you know, when the government pays for it, all of you pay for it. It's on the backs of the taxpayers. So I cannot commit to putting that on the back of the taxpayers another at least eight hundred thousand dollars by virtue of us saying, this is just the start. This two hundred and fifty thousand dollar engineering study is the start. That's the start of the process. I cannot support that, cannot do that in good conscience. So my vote will be no. Not because I don't think it's a good idea. I just don't think we the people should be paying for it. Why in the world would we pay for it when we're looking everywhere we can to keep above water? And this hospital had a net profit of eight hundred million dollars? With the CEO being paid one point four million and the top second person one point three. And that's great. I'm glad they've done well. But don't put this kind of project on the taxpayers in Macon, Georgia. I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. One point, however, now, this is the roundabout in the public right-of-way, and you've got ninety percent of the people that pass through there that aren't going to Navisant. They're going by Navisant. So it could be manna from heaven that Navisant's trying to help build it because it is at their front doorstep and help us maintain it. Commissioner Lucas, I've got your light on next, ma'am.
Thank you. What my colleague from District Four is saying may be correct. And he has a right to his opinion on this. But the fact is that this is in the right-of-way. The fact is that it's going to create a safer situation there where all of those streets come together. It is a fact that the vote was taken to improve streets. That was a part of what we approved in this last SPOLOST. This is certainly going to improve that entire area. There's a historic church in that area that will have its front porch improved in a lot of different ways. From what I understand, parking will be prohibited in that area right behind the subway and in front of Historic Stewart Chapel Church. And that's been a problem for years and years. This will allow also for better access, safer access, because people barrel down through that street in front of the church. And as my pastor has said, there've been a number of accidents there. There's just so many streets and so many lights. And it's long, long wait time. If you've ever sat there, you know that it's long wait time. So for these reasons, I'm going to support this. And the other thing, and final thing, is that we have worked really hard to spotlight the Cotton Avenue Historic District. A district where black business people thrived years ago. If you come through there now, you know that there's a need for a lot of work in that area. This, all these improvements will focus more attention on that historic black area of our city. There's an owner that's, who has purchased, he and his partner have purchased the row of buildings there with H&amp;H that will block from H&amp;H up to the parking lot of the church with the idea of doing some renovating. This all ties together, and it will allow the Cotton Avenue Coalition to work to spotlight the historic structures in the area and also make some improvement to the properties in there. So I sympathize with my colleague on his concerns, but I'm in favor of working with Navisant in creating a better environment in that area, a safer environment in that area, spotlighting the historic black Cotton Avenue Business District in that area. And it doesn't hurt that they employ, they're one of the, aren't they the biggest employer? Don't they employ, how many people do they employ? How many? In excess of six thousand. And I'm sure many of them are my constituents and yours as well. So I would urge us to support this, and let's continue to support the improvements in that historic area. There'll even be a sign, from what I understand, that says Cotton Avenue Historic District. When you enter that area and then that beautiful children's hospital that's going to be over to your right, and then there's a subway, and then our historic church will be able to make some improvements there as well. So I think the pluses outweigh the negatives on this, so I'm voting yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Schlesinger, got your light on next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the Commission and the public that the last time that accusations against Navisant were made from the horseshoe and then subsequently ended up on the editorial page of The Telegraph that Andy Galloway very eloquently, but very sharply refuted the figures that were presented from this horseshoe. I live in the neighborhood. I like, my good friend Pastor Franklin know that that's kind of a crazy intersection if it's not a dangerous intersection that needs attention. The plan has been approved by in-town Macon, which is basically the umbrella neighborhood organization. It will only improve traffic flow there. So I'm sure that Navisant's got something to say about the information that's been presented to us today, which I don't take it as face value, but this will be a nice improvement and gateway into downtown Macon.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Commissioner Jones, got your light on again, and then there's somebody behind you.
Yes, sir. To my colleague, Commissioner Lucas, we don't always agree, but we respect each other's opinion. And we need to note that we'd never heard of this project till just a few months ago. So what we've done is allow them to go to the front of the line and go ahead of lots of other projects. To my other respected colleague from District Two over there, and he has the email, so he knows the information is factual. That came exactly from Navisant Health officials, and it was certainly not intended to be an attack. It's certainly a statement of fact, and it's all factual. He's got a... He's got a copy of it, as does every other commissioner around the horseshoe. It's all factual, and the comments from Mr. Andy Galloway were not factual. He's retired. The figures came from a current employee, a senior vice president of Navisant Health, not from somebody who'd been retired years ago and doesn't really know what he's talking about. I yield back.
Commissioner Beck, can you add to this conversation, sir?
I, I, I just didn't want to be left out. I'm not going to debate the merits of anything Commissioner Jones said. I just, rarely do we build public works, roads, where we have a partner who's willing to pitch in and pay for a portion of it and then take over the maintenance. This is a, this is a roundabout that is needed, as Commissioner Lucas said, to approve traffic. And I'm, I'm just glad we, we do have a partner who's willing to participate in the way they've, they are going to. And the last thing I'll say is, please call the question.
That was a motion to call the question. Is there a second to calling the question? Got a motion and second to call the question? All in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, so the rest of these lights go off. There is no further discussion. We are at, we are at the resolution and the final, final vote. All those in favor of the ordinance, if you forgot what we were talking about, it's approved for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering costs for the roundabout at the intersection of Spring and Pine and Cotton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got one, one no, Commissioner Jones, the ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item Q is a resolution to appoint folks to the Macon Economic Development Commission. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to appoint Dr. James Bumpus and to reappoint Gene Dunwoodie Senior to serve on the Macon Economic Development Commission and other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution for Women's History Month, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to recognize the month of March, two thousand and eighteen, as Women's History Month and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item S now is the closure of a, a portion of Elizabeth Street to enable the Tyndall Heights redevelopment program to continue. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the closure of a portion of Elizabeth Street from Nuss Bond Avenue to the proposed Tyndall Avenue for the purpose of the Tyndall Heights redevelopment project and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item T. Item T was tabled in pre-commission. That was dealing with the hotel motel tax and, and will be taken up next week at, at a regular committee meeting. Item U is an appointment to the Board of Health, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Joe Allen to the Macon Bibb County Board of Health to complete the unexpired term of Bivens III and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Finally, there's a resolution to use a portion of the sale proceeds from West Side Stadium to make needed improvements at Henderson Stadium. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the use of one million, fifteen hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thou, four hundred and fifty dollars of the proceeds from the sale of the Ed De Forre Sports Complex for the completion of improvements to Henderson Stadium, subject to the availability of said sale proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
A committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. And finally, an, an ordinance to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for actuarial studies. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon, an ordinance of the Commission of Macon Bibb County, Georgia, to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from general fund balance to human resources budget to pay for actuarial study on recommendations for adjustments to pension plans as supplemental number five and other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Tillman, you got anything on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I, I really just think we need to start evaluating and paying close attention to our HR. Stuff that they could really be doing, a lot of this stuff. And when we're talking about some of the needs assessment, I guess we, we just need to get some answers, from Fitbits to what have you. I mean, we got, what's it? Well, we just need to utilize them more. And we need to get an update on the Fitbit process as well, that we're waiting on over there also.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got one no, that still leaves us with five. One, two, three, four, five, and one no. So, the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Believe it or not, we're down to new business. There is no new business on the agenda for us to read out tonight. But, I urge you to check the agenda that is published on Friday because I do anticipate additional resolutions and ordinances being prepared by the legal department. They will be on the agenda that's issued on Friday afternoon. And they'll be heard at our committee meetings here next Tuesday morning, beginning at nine AM, when we have committee meetings. That brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items. And we have a, a couple of, of people that want to address us tonight. Uh-oh, three. Okay, three. We've got Jessica Lewis, Ms. Lewis, are you still with us? We thank you very much for your patience, sorry to keep you waiting so long. And I think you want to talk to us about Avalon Mobile Home Park?
Yes, sir, I'm actually not Jessica Lewis. She did have to leave, but I am one of the residents from Avalon as well. So, I'm hoping that I can speak, you know, pretty much on, same as she was on our behalf. And we're having some major, major-
Give us your name so we can-
I'm sorry, it's Paqueet Patrick.
Say it again.
Paqueet Patrick.
Okay, Ms. Patrick, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Avalon Mobile Home Park. We have close to maybe, I'm going to say seventy homes and homeowners maybe that live there. Most of us, our homeowners, are doing a, I guess, lease purchase option. They don't rent, if they do, they tell us that they don't. But, we're having some major, major problems with them. I'm, I'm one of the people who own their home, and I've been, for the last year, these people have been trying to put me out of my home. I'm just one of the, say, three people at the current moment who is waiting on them to come with a truck to move their home because they know they can't evict us because we are homeowners. But, we, they advertise and put their properties online. So, people from all over come there. Like, there are other families who have moved and left their homes that they have either paid for or put high-down payments on and make monthly payments as their mortgages. And these people have literally left and moved because they were afraid that they were, you know, being evicted. And because they're not from here, they don't have anywhere to go. Our biggest concern is, for the last year, we've been trying to make this public. And every single brick wall that could have been placed in front of us has been there. But, I'm determined to knock down every single one of those brick walls. I'm a single mother of two teenagers, and I promise my children, you know, just like you all do, that you're going to have a roof over your head every day. And I made that promise when I paid for my home. I'm not renting the home, I'm not making mortgage payments on the home. It is paid for. There are multiple other residents that have not only paid for their home when they purchased it, purchased it, but have paid several other times as well. We, the owners are the same, but we have a different property management company who treats us like we are no one. They change, we used to have onsite management, we no longer have that. So, we can't pay our lot fees and things onsite like we used to. They give us these little cards that we have to go into Kroger, Walmart, Kmart or somewhere to pay on, and they are deactivated. And they deactivate them so that we can't pay because they don't take any other form of payment unless you're under eviction. So, they wait about three, four, five months. They take you to court for eviction, even though you're a homeowner and not even supposed to be able to go to civil and magistrate court. But, I've been twice in six months. They come up with these all types of fees that they say you owe. There's no way possible we can owe them anything because all we pay is lot fee and water. They don't do anything for us as residents besides let our homes reside on their property. Not only that, they haven't paid their property taxes for the whole complex. There's a lien on the property from the tax commissioner's office. I have my title in hand, I've had it since the summer, and I can't put it in my own name because they haven't paid the property taxes, and the tax commissioner will not allow me to pay those taxes. I'm not the only homeowner that is going through this. These people are leaving their homes, they have paid thousands of dollars for. And we paid three hundred and fifty dollars lot fee plus forty-five dollars water, and we do not get anything besides our home being on this property. We can't buy the land or anything. We didn't even have a problem with that because there were things that came along with that in our leases when we first moved there that no longer apply. They can make changes to their leases when they feel like it, they don't tell us, they don't talk to us, they don't do anything. And we're constantly being taken to court. Like, right now, my card does not work. I can't pay my lot fee. Not because I don't have it, not because I don't want to, because they will not allow me to. And then they take you to court and say you owe outrageous amounts of money. They just add hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars and say that you owe this money. And we say, well, where does this money come from if I am only obligated to pay this amount of money every month? They don't have a reason. They say it, the courts say, guess what, you have to pay it. There's a woman, a resident, whose home is paid for. It was one price, they're trying to tell her that it's two, three thousand dollars more and that she's not paid a dime on her property in two years. We know that's not true because she wouldn't still be living there if she's paid you nothing. She's been to court twice in six months as well. One of my bigger issues is how I came about purchasing this property. Macon Bibb County has a lot of landlords, and we have no one who regulates these houses if the tenants aren't under Section Eight. So, people get to pretty much just do what they want to do and charge you what they want to charge you for filth.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and I do hope that you've got an attorney that's-
We can't get one because no attorney will take our cases. They all tell us that it is a conflict of interest.
Well, I don't know about that, but I, I-
Well, you, you, I, I guarantee you, I've Googled.
Yeah, thank you very much for being here and bringing this to our attention. We, we, we appreciate it, but, but you really do need to take legal action through the courts, I think.
It, we've tried all those things as well. We even have the backing by the NAACP, they go to court with us. But, it, it still hasn't helped us.
Thank you very much, your, your, your time has expired for us tonight, so thank you very much for being here.
So, I'm going to have to come every two weeks and have these conversations with you all because I'm about to lose my home on the streets that I paid for. And there are other people that are going through the same thing.
Yet, yet you're more than welcome to come back.
I will, I can-
You, you're more, you, you're, you're more than welcome, and thank you very much for being here. Mr. Wade Horton, Mr. Horton?
Good evening again.
Good evening again.
Normally, I talk about transit, I thought, I'm not going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about a different kind of movement today. And I want to talk about health and wellness for us because it's very important to our well-being and our, just our lifestyle. And most, most time you see people who, if you can't, if you're afraid that you're going to fall and you can't get up, then you have a problem. If you are very stiff, that tells me that your health is bad and you have a problem. If you find yourself losing muscle and you're not as strong as you were last year, year before, you have a problem. And I want Macon to start a program that probably could be a beacon for the rest of the state in getting the citizens out, getting them moving, getting them to lift weights. If you've been walking around the track for years and years and you're still having problems, that exercise ain't working for you. You might need to change. And do some weight-bearing exercises that would build muscle and speed up the metabolism a little bit so that you can lift stuff that you couldn't lift. Some, some, some of these people are pulling muscles because they're lifting babies. So, we need to do more about that. When I was growing up, I remember, I'm from the Pleasant Hill area. Booker T was a great center at that time, I hope it comes back. But, I remember there were a lot of different block parties and stuff, and firemen came out, and we had, police came out, and they, you know, participated, and the people got to know our local law enforcement and our firemen. Actually, I wanted to be a fireman, I don't know how I want the sheriff's department, but... I see, I can see something happening that we can do something on that scale where we go to all the different neighborhoods and we have a street party. But, this street party is filled with different types of exercises and different types of information to give people because I find that a lot of people really don't know what to do when they do it. They don't know what order they should do it. Like, some people, they might go to work out in the gym, and the best way to work out is, is to do your weight training first and then do your cardio. Most people think that the cardio is so much more important. And there could be debate on it. But, I believe that a person who is able to lift weights or lift items in their day-to-day life is, is the top priority. Now, I'm not saying cardio is not important, it is, very important. But, I think the, what people, most people, when they decide they're going to do something, they'll say, well, I'm going to go walk. And walking is good, and it, it keeps your body moving because the body in motion stays in motion. We heard that commercial, and it's, it's so true. But, we need to work on flexibility. So important, when you bend down and you can't get back up because you pulled a muscle in your back. You know, and like I said, when we start out, if we, if you're afraid to fall, then that's a problem. So, I would like to see a, see us, and I'm just brainstorming, there could be some more better ideas, but if, if we can go into our neighborhoods, we're going to touch some of our employees as well as people in the community. Because if our employees are given opportunity or shown how to exercise, over the years, we have done very poorly on educating people on health and wellness and how to keep themselves active and mobile. And if we do that, we can lower some of the costs. But, we have to start somewhere, we have to start with a plan. Silver sneakers, I don't know, many people know this or not. If you have a Medicare Advantage plan that offers silver sneakers, you can work out at, at all of the, just about all the gyms in Macon for free. You just take your, sign up, take your card and sign up with silver sneakers. Now, I wonder if the same plan could be negotiated with the employees' health plan so that they can off, have something similar to a silver sneakers plan in the, in the, in our health. That way, people could not say, "I don't have the money," because a lot of people don't have the money. But, if it's in the plan, people might attend. And guess what? If they go, your health costs may come down on the front end. People might not need as much medicine, they might not have to go to the hospital as much because, again, if your muscles are weak, if your body's stiff, you're going to have health issues.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, appreciate you being there. Mr. Curry?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, can you, can you wind us up here on a high note?
I don't know how you can go, man, but I try to lift you up.
All right, well, you're the last button on Joe's coat, so do, do what you can for us.
I get ten minutes?
No, five, you recognized for five minutes, and your time's already going.
I know it. Well, I, I really, I really ain't got enough people to talk to, man. This is like, I thought it was going to be a promising night.
You want to come back in two weeks?
Yeah, I can, but since I'm here, I'll throw a few minutes in there. Okay, Mr. Mayor. Here we go. I thought it was going to be an outstanding night because, uh, uh, the commissioner said, country, he, he mentioned the word conscious, that's what I'm always trying to raise y'all, conscious level. And then he mentioned we were going to put everything on the table, that was a good thing. And then he mentioned we were gonna put everything on the table, that was a good thing. But I'm here to just, I'm gonna come back later though, but then I'm gonna throw a few rocks tonight. I'm gonna hide my hand. Okay, I'm here to talk about Freedom Park. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you built the Juvenile Justice Center, first of all, eight million dollars. That was the first project out the gate, Juvenile Justice Center down the street, okay. On recreation, you had thirty-nine million dollars, thirty-nine million, okay. In my area, we went backwards. Let me show you just a little thing about backwards. You building everything everywhere, in Freedom Park, we had a swimming pool. You let that go bust. Took forty thousand, the man that was running all the pools said, that was the boom in his pool in Macon. You let that deteriorate. Then, for some reason, like a thief in the night, you all slip in there and changed Freedom Park Gym to boxing. Now, when you changed the gym to...
Can I correct you?
Come on with it.
That was changed before consolidation. When, when the county had the Recreation Department, they made the decision to convert that to boxing.
Okay, well, we gonna do it like this. We gonna do it...
I'm just trying to stay facts.
All right, I ain't got no problem with that.
You put your finger up there and say, we did it, we did it.
Hold up, I'm, I'm coming back.
I'm using up some of your time.
Gotcha, I know it. When we became as one, Mr. Mayor, when we became as one, Macon-Bibb, we became as one body. So, if you live in a glass house, you can't throw no stone. We gonna go back and come all the way around the block.
I didn't hide my hand there, Mr. Horton.
But check this out. At this time, we spending two, but, but, but it's still, it's about, it's about a thirty-nine million. It's about a thirty-nine million, Mr. Mayor. What you doing is systematic racism over there in West Macon, this is what you did. You killed out the boxing, I mean, a gym, and made it boxing. So, that killed out a nation of amenities for the community, poor black neighborhood, poor and disadvantaged. District Nine and, and Commissioner Bivens, he outta here. I sure wanted him bad in a woodpecker wanted wood, but he gone. Okay, so, here we go. You spent it... Hold up now, don't cut the mic off, brother. You spent two-point-six million dollars over there on the baseball fields. You took away the swimming, which is a vital lifeline for the black children to learn how to swim. You could've went to the YMCA, but we couldn't go. Okay, you killed that out, killed out the swimming pool, you killed out the gym, so now the only thing over there is boxing. Now, the white children that play in that area, Mr. Mayor, that you giving the two-point-six million to refurbish all them fields, don't even live in that area. They come from the northwest, southeastwest, play in that area, and vanish. The poor children that live in that area, Beavview, Bartlett Crossing, North Napier, and all the surrounding little streets, don't have no inside facility to go in. Out of the rainstorms, need a snow, and you spending thirty-nine million dollars. I should return though, you spending thirty-nine million dollars, that's a disgrace. For my Commissioner, Mr. Tillman, and Mr. Bivens, their area boiled just like this together. He saying that was an excellent idea for the boxing. Mr., Commissioner Bivens saying, well, you can't put a gym in every neighborhood, but you killing out the vital lifeline for that area. Know what you doing? You running them to the Juvenile Justice Center so you can profit off them, cause they have no inside facilities, they have nowhere to go. Now, I'm gonna get the news people over there to see how this thing is blooming at, at Freedom Park. And get the children, you stacking the deck, so when, when the thing get developed, all the white children gonna have the league froze out, they gonna come play. This is what they saying, well, my daddy, 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 daddy played there. So, this is a public, not private, uh, recreation. I know you don't wanna hear it, Mr. Mayor, but it is what it is. Okay, so now, we gonna fight this thing, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Tillman. You either be with us or against it. You can tell your protege, Mr. Bivens, too, we want a town hall meeting with both of you all, since y'all are represented. And if you sit back and, and, see, you could've put this gym out there in Bloomfield. You had three gyms and forty-three acres of land out there. They just were getting up and paperwork. But wouldn't it, wouldn't it, hey, check this out. When the white people down there talking about the dog bargain all night, y'all was up there slumming out the mouth, looking at them with undivided attention.
Your time is up, Mr. Curry. I showed who hated, I showed who hated you.
I know you do, but anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir, we appreciate it, we'll see you in two weeks.
I ain't heard the buzzer go off, Mr. Mayor.
We'll see you in two weeks. And we've come to the end of our agenda, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Hey, hey, Mr. Mayor.
We got a motion to adjourn, without objection, we adjourn. Good to see you, Mr. Curry.
Mr. Mayor, it's funny, but it ain't that funny. Same thing makes you laugh or makes you cry, you remember that.
I was here in time to sign up, and there was no sign-up sheet. And I put my name down over there and said that. And I expect to talk tonight after sitting here for two and a half hours all night.
Come back in two weeks, sir, we don't even have a quorum now to listen. We don't even have, we don't, we don't even have a board to listen.
There's a lot of people up here that have a lot more sense than you do, and I hope that the next time there's an election, you're gone.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
And I'm tired of hearing myself talking. And I'm tired of being ignored by you people, I've talked over and over about this, and I'm sick and tired of the BS that goes on up here. I think you spent half an hour talking about a health system, arguing about it. You should've just tabled the damn thing and done the talking on your own time, instead of wasting our time with it.
Thank you, sir.
You're not welcome.
All right, sir.
No, he's in a big rush to get out of here, he doesn't, he doesn't give a darn about the people. He cares about himself.